Good morning, everyone. It's nine o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. Jerry, is Jim on yet? No? Okay. Well, we will have regular votes until Jim is on. Once Jim is on, then we will have to go to roll call votes. Did you switch locations, Sandy?
Would I what?
You switched locations on me here.
I can't.
Yes, you switched. You're not sitting in the same spot you once were.
Well, I know, but I think my days-
I don't smell good, so they sent me over here.
All right.
That's right, it's right there.
You're good.
It confused me, too.
I know. Well-
It's good to change things up.
Again, welcome, everybody. Looks like we have a few items on the agenda this morning. To get started, welcome to the September 14th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on October 6th, 2020, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. Note that there are no folks here from the public at this time during the start of the meeting. With that, we'll get started with roll call, noting that everyone is here, Les, Jim Coleman, and Deb is here from the commission. Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of the August 24th, 2020 minutes. Are there any corrections, changes, notes?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
Page 20.
Okay.
Should've been ready for you. The word estimate is put in where I believe they want surety slash bond. In the last sentence, it goes in the, I'm reading this last, "In the decommissioning cost estimate be submitted after 10 years of operation. And the cost estimate for decommissioning is more than 2.3 million. The surety slash bond must meet the current estimate." I don't believe it's the estimate they want to talk about. They want the bond to go up or down.
This was page 20 of the notes?
Yes, item number 25.
Letter, Commissioner. I, so does that, do you see that, Jerry? Okay. Any other changes to the minutes?
Good catch.
Okay. Hearing none, seeing none. I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item two, approval of the agenda. On today's consent agenda, we have items three through five. We have then normal items six and seven, followed by our follow-up items, county board report, items from the public, items from staff, items from membership and adjournment. Any changes to the agenda today? Hearing none, seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 1520 for Mitch Morris to review constru-, excuse me, to review construction equipment sales on the subject property in the general agriculture district. And staff is recommending to end conditional use permit CU 1520 per the applicant's request. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 20-03 for Scott and Janice Harris to review a multifamily dwelling in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 20-03 with conditions. And finally, item five is minor plan unit development amendment review PU 1805 for Grant and Sandra Parsons, Plum Creek Homes, to review an existing plan unit development to allow the proposed single family to be used as a bed and breakfast. And staff is recommending approval of the extension of minor plan unit development amendment PU 1805 with conditions.
Thank you. Does staff have any items they wish to pull from the consent agenda?
We do not.
Does the board have any items they wish to pull from the agenda? Nothing from the membership. Noting, for the record, that there is no one here from the public to pull any items from the agenda. Is Jim on? Jim is no longer on, is not on either. With that, today's consent agenda consists of items three through five. I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries, consent agenda is passed. Brings us to item six.
Good morning, Stephanie Jansen, Planner One. Item six is conditional use permit CU 2020 for applicant Larry Matthews to allow a multifamily dwelling on the subject property at 23511 Cattle Drive to house their son and his new bride. The lot is currently zoned low-density residential district with a total of 4.24 acres. Access is taken off of Cattle Drive. There is no special flood hazard area on the subject property. As it stands now, the subject property contains a manufactured home and an attached garage with living space above. There are no other concerns for this property. Staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU 2020.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Any further discussion? Just to be clear, you're not here for the public, sir. You're, thank you.
He's our HR guy.
Now, I know. I wanted to make sure I'm following the new rules here in front of me, so. We had a motion and second, no further discussion.
I'd just like to ask one question. I noticed that you didn't have if sold, that this one, are we not doing that anymore on CUPs? If sold, that it would go away?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Just wondered, because I know it was, it's housing. It's not like a use. But I just wondered whether you add that in or keep that out when it's housing?
No.
Okay, you haven't been using it when it's housing. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item seven.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Item number seven is layout plan LPL 20-24 to create lots A through L of Mills Rand subdivision. The applicant for this property is David Grover. He is requesting to subdivide three existing tracts into 12 residential lots. The lot sizes will range from approximately five acres to nine acres. As the property stands today, there are three actual parcels that are subject to this plan. The first one is tract A of HES number 303, Les Busmar subdivision, Les Tract Dean, Les Tract Drew, and Les Right-of-Way of HES number 303 subdivision. This property is currently zoned general agriculture district. It consists of 67.25 acres, and it does contain a single-family residence that was built in 1909, and some farm utility buildings, barns, lean-to's, and loafing sheds. There is no special flood hazard area on this property. Access is off of Old Hill City Road. Old Hill City Road is maintained by the Pennington County Highway Department. And the future land use designation for this property is ranchette, which allows for a minimum five-acre lot size. Tract B of HES number 303, Les Tract Drew, is one smaller parcel to the north. It consists of 1.62 acres. It is vacant of any structures. There is no special flood hazard area. This has, this does have access off of Old Hill City Road, and the future land use designation is rural residential, which allows for three-acre lot sizes. And the last is a very small government lot, Les Busmar subdivision, Les Tract Dean, Les Tract Drew, and Les Right-of-Way. It is zoned general agriculture district. It is .97 acres. It is vacant of any structures, no special flood hazard area, and the future land use designation for this is agriculture. The proposed lots will range from five acres to nine acres. Only one of the lots would have a home on it, and that is the proposed lot J, and that would be approximately 8.9 acres. The property owner is aware that lot size variances or rezones are required. He is looking to rezone it to that ranchette residential zoning district because that does allow a minimum five-acre lot size. This was routed around through the interdepartmental review. There were a couple items that did come back. The highway department just wants to ensure that approach permits off of Old Hill City Road will be obtained, and that illegal access for tracks M and L will need to be plotted, and that natural drainage areas must be maintained, not blocked. And actually, during the, this process, the property owner did submit a plan that had 13 lots instead of 12. So that's why the comments from the highway department are for tracks M and L, and it should actually be for K and L. If you look, it's in the southeast corner of the property. There is access to those from a Forest Service road. I have talked to the applicant, and he is going to either secure a special use permit with the Forest Service for that access, or he is going to plat a easement off of Old Hill City Road in the event that that Forest Service access is no longer allowed. The Register of Deeds just had one comment that they would not like to use Lot I as a designation because it's often mistaken for the number one, so they would like to use lots A through H and J through M instead. Equalization just had some questions about the amount of right-of-way and how many acres that would be. County 911 does want road names to be approved following the next plating process. So staff is going to recommend approval of this layout plan with 15 conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item?
I have, Chair?
Go ahead, Deb.
So, when you have Old City Road and different roads in the area, how much density can one road take before it needs to be improved to, because that road's pretty skinny? How much density, or how many roads per, or cars per area? Is that a good way to put it? I don't know how to say it right, but basically, if we keep putting developments on this road, how much can that road take before it needs to be improved?
So that was not a comment that was given by the highway department, and I believe it's because this can be accessed. It looks like they are going to plot an access through the middle of this that will supply access. There was an access that was platted through here, probably about four or five years ago when Bob Drew came through and platted this off into those Tract Dean, Tractorous. He is just relocating that right-of-way, and you will see that request in the, at the next meeting that he is relocating that right-of-way that is already plotted and exists. And this property also takes access off of Towering Pines, which is a north-south access. So there should only be one extra access point to this if they choose to build the road or to Lot B. All the other ones will be provided access through interior roads.
But they're still outletting through Old City Road, Old City-
They are.
Hill City Road. So again, how many developments can you put on one road before you have to improve it? Meaning, how many, do you see what I'm saying? Because it's going to start destroying that little road pretty quick the more development we put on it. And then who pays for that? The county.
Well, as far as most of the roads in the county, Old Hill City Road is probably one of the better ones that is actually improved, that does have an asphalt surface and 24-foot wide and ditches. So that is a plus. The highway department did not comment on that.
Right.
I am guessing that in their opinion, that it is suitable for this type of development because they did not comment that they would require improvements. They have made those comments on other plaits, so.
So they're not worried about the density? And now, Brittany, we were talking about how drainage and other things affect other developments. Are we looking a little bit closer at holding ponds and things like that now in the areas that we are developing a lot of lots, in case they are affecting the surrounding areas?
And I have talked to Mr. Grover about that, and that will come in the stormwater permit. He is required to get a stormwater permit for the road construction and the disturbances in this, and that will be addressed in that. It is actually covered under that section 507.
Okay. The bottom-line planning commissions, we're looking at areas, we're having the city build around us, and we're having some flooding out from their drainage. So anywhere that we can build detention ponds bigger or holding ponds, that would help us in the future is going to be huge, anywhere that we have the city even surrounding by us, or in areas that in the future could be affecting other developments or anything around it. So just food for thought on that. Start looking at areas for drainage and make sure that it's not affecting anywhere else, or that if the city is by it, that we probably need a little bit bigger holding ponds and different things in order to capture some of that water. Because in the future, you already know, the city's not going to build us a bigger holding pond than that developer needs to do it. So anything that we have drainage areas like north of, or I should say, east of Elkvale and north of that school area, we need some holding ponds and different things, so. Brittany, any comment?
Go ahead, Brittany.
Oh, no, those will just be addressed during the plating process. I know Colin McNeese with the State's Attorney's Office and I are working on updating the subdivision regulations, and some requirements for drainage plans will be required in the future upfront as far as what you guys will see as part of the plating process.
Right, metering dams are going to be huge for us. And again, there's, you're looking at the one-mile and three-mile areas, and Brittany is working with the city on some of that, which will take a while. But anything that we can work with with them in order to, basically, when I was in the city, the county was an issue, and every time I went to, and now that I'm in the county, the city's an issue. So there's got to be something that in that one-mile, three-mile, prepare them for what we are doing, and basically, working together with that city in order to move forward, because they're not going to annex anything that we put in the county if we don't have the infrastructure ready for it, so.
Sandy?
Mr. Chairman, you know, the letter that we received or the email indicated that the lot size in this particular zoning is a minimum of 10 acres?
It is for the current zoning. The future land use with our new comp plan for the view to 2040 indicates this area is ranchette, which allows for five-acre lot sizes.
Okay, so this, this, this plating then would comply with the future planning?
Yes, he is going to have to rezone this property, and it does, it is in harmony with our future land use plan.
Yeah. But does this, does this layout, whatever, does it constitute rezoning now, or just a deviation or variance from the current zoning?
He will have to rezone this property before the final plaque can be filed with the Register of Deeds.
Oh, I see.
And I have talked to him at length, and part of the reason for the lot sizes that he is proposing is because of the future land use designation.
I see. Okay. Thank you very much. I just didn't know the legal position is reflected in this letter.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Kind of support what Deb's saying, that particular road has zero shoulder and has many, many totally blind turns on it. And when you're talking, the pressure that's coming from that direction, and there's going to be more for development, the density does seem to be a concern, especially with the zero shoulder. If a car breaks down on that road right now, it, the best you can do is get half off the road. That's how tight that is. It is an excellent road, but it is very dangerous from that viewpoint. If that car breaks down on one of the blind turns, now half of it's on the road, and you can have vehicles coming. So I do support what Deb's saying. And in fact, I'm sure they have some, well, what did I say, ghosts hawking them from Sheraton Lake Road over the same exact lack of getting together on the planning. And this may be another one sitting, waiting to go the same direction. It is a good road to drive if people stay within the limits of the road. But my, my question here, and you can address me, this is one I wanted to give you the ear horn when I talk about things that don't exist anymore. Apparently, we don't have the perk tests on the lots anymore.
We do, and that is, is we just use it as a basic recommendation that they have to meet all of our subreg requirements instead of listing-
Oh, a general cookie cutter type of thing?
Right.
Okay, rather than specifying that it's the perk test, and then they don't have to come in advance anymore? They only come with the building permit?
No, they still have to waive the requirements.
Okay.
But in the past, Mr. Grover has done them on other plaits. He'll, he does the percolation and profile holes as part of the plating process, and he has done that in the past on other plaits. The one that he just did across the street on that Busmar subdivision, he did do all the percolation and profile holes.
Especially with her rock formations, do they usually pick a location so that it leaves room for the house without, or the residence without being, ending up on top of the perk hole? We used to have problems with that all the time.
So one good thing, Mr. Grover is a licensed certified septic installer. So he does take that into consideration when he's doing the percolation and profile holes.
Thank you, Brittany. Appreciate it.
Go ahead, Kathy.
You know, I live right off the Old Hill City Road. In fact, this is kind of in my neighborhood, and so, you know, to my personal opinion regarding the road, Charlie's right that it's a very narrow road because there's no shoulders, but I'm not at all concerned about the additional traffic from, you know, a dozen or so more houses, because the summertime traffic with tourists and motorcycles and so on is, is the big number. You know, a few more cars in the wintertime isn't even going to be noticed. But if that road ultimately needs to be, put some shoulders on it, it's the, the driving force is going to be the summertime traffic, because that's where the accidents happen. That's why motorcycles fall off the edge, and so on, and so on. So I'm not, I mean, personally, you know, that's, as I say, this is my neighbor, and I'm not at all worried about that. Drainage is an issue, and I think that the number three on the recommendation is real important, and it can't be overemphasized, because right now, you know, that whole process slopes from west to the east off of Ford Mountain, and the drainage pond now is on Lot J. That's where the existing drainage pond is. And then it drains across the road to the north, onto the other subdivision that Mr. Grover recently did. And so that, that, and then it ultimately gets to Palmer Creek, but that needs to make sure there's some sort of a catchment. The catchment base on somehow needs to be maintained in one form or another, like, you know, as a metering dam, so to speak.
Yep.
And there's a natural impoundment there now that serves that function, but I think that number three really needs to be emphasized. But I, you know, I, I agree with the writer of the letter, and I know Karen and Tim because we're in the neighborhood, but this, I mean, I know that five acres sounds like a big chunk of land in a lot of settings, but out there, it isn't. And I worry more about the water situation. I mean, I don't want to, if we don't watch out, that area along Old Hill City Road is going to be another situation where we have a roomful of neighbors worrying about the water situation, just like on, off of-
Rockville.
Yeah, Rockville, that's exactly right. That's what's going to happen, because we have an adequate well at our house, but it's, we live on a large chunk of land, and I don't think there's enough water for another house on that 23, 25 acres. And so it's, and I'm not worried about them approaching our water, because we've done the hydrology, and our water comes from Summit Peak. I'm sure this, these people's water comes from Ford Mountain. But I just think in general, there are limitations out there as to how many, what's the, what's the density that can be supported? And so I, I don't like these five-acre lots, and I've kind of gone on record that I certainly don't like the three-acre lots in this, this type of area, and so I'm inclined not to support the rezoning. And even though I know that the, the future land use plan has that, and there's this new, you know, we've never had that ranchette before, and so it's kind of a new concept and so on, but I, I don't know. I, I don't, I just think we've got to take the longer view, and the longer view is that that area, you know, shouldn't be, you know, less than 10-acre lots, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead, Travis.
Brittany, quick question, because I know she references in here, there's most of those lots are 10 acres or more. On the map that I have here that's showing all the parcels, are they, what are the average sizes, or what are they showing? That's the map I'm looking at, so what are those? Do you have the numbers of those?
No, not exactly. The ones to the north off of Ford Mountain are smaller lots. Yeah, the Busmar subdivision.
The one they're referring to, this whole area right here?
Right.
That Jim Skell did?
Okay.
These are all 10 to 15 acre lots.
Those are all 10s.
Yeah.
Now, what about these?
These are small, these are the, these are the new ones that he plotted, or platted right in this area. These are, this is a real old subdivision, and they're the, they're the smaller lots, like three to five acres.
What is rural ranchette? What are the acreages on rural ranchettes?
Five, and rural residential is three.
This is where Tim and Tim live.
Karen, I don't know if they're still talking or-
Ten acre plus parcel. All the new, all the new development, except for this area right here that Mr. Grover already did just a little bit ago, which I voted opposed for three acres, all the other new development are more in the 10, 10 to 15 acre. This, these are the old ones over here.
Old, old ones.
Did that answer your question, Travis?
Yes, that's what I had, at least, I had an idea.
Now, where do you, Deb?
Well, you have low-density residential, and then ranchettes all over this area for future land use, so I guess, Brittany, when you guys decided to change future land use, you knew and understood the water sources and the things that were going on out there when you decided to do future land use out there?
They take those things into consideration through the comp plan. They look at how land is being used in the area. We haven't had, and not to say that, that isn't there, but there hasn't been any communication with our office from D E N R or other residences about water concerns in the area, so.
Okay, and then number two is the lady's east of, she's in Palmer Gulch area. That's down the road a bit, and hers is surrounded by, it looks like, low-density and, which is a-
What Karen is referring to is that the large, the only new, really large-scale new development that's been there, it was the, what Jim Skell put in, and it's called Tinload Court. And then across the road, which isn't really quite shown here, is Palmer, Palmer Pond Road, and his development was all these 10 to 15-acre parcels. It's this area right here. And then, and where Karen and Tim live is where that you see the 33, and then you see one, two, three, four, five dots. That's Karen and Tim, and this is, then right across the road is where Dorlan and I live.
Okay, but there's still a space in between, right?
So there's a little Forest Service area there, yeah.
Yeah, where no one would build, so she does have a buffer?
Oh, yeah. I don't, that's not her concern. Her concern really is just that, I mean, she's, I'm in agreement with her on that, that if you take the long view, this area just cannot sustain these small lots. And I know that, as I said, five acres doesn't seem very small in some settings, but out there it is.
Yeah, and, you know, and I believe the future land use should be a guide, not something that's cast in stone, because when we approved it, we couldn't possibly have analyzed, you know, every single situation, you know, that would come up, so.
But if you look at there, there's a lot of low-density, or the yellow ones around it.
But that's old. I mean, those are the, I know, but it's, that's, that's the old, that is old, you know, development. That was not the recent. The only one that's really recent that has been of note is the Jim Skell development, and his are all between 10 and 20, or 10 and 15.
Isn't low-density three acres? And Palmer Gulch up here shows three acres. And Palmer Gulch up here shows three acres.
Yes, low density is three acres. That darker green is 10 acres, and that's that Harney Mountain Estates. That's the one that Mr. Skoll has developed in the last five years.
So around that tin lodge, that's been developed within the last five years. The over there where the original developments were, how long ago were those developed?
Those ones are quite a bit older, except for the one that's across the street that Mr. Grover just rezoned and platted.
So they were there before the 10 acre lots. They were doing three acre lots all the way around this area.
So that Ford Mountain area is actually smaller lots, so those are grandfathered. They're actually general ag, but they're smaller than what the general ag zoning district allows. But those ones, those ones to the north there on Old Hill City Road are older developments.
But if you move in a low density area and you've looked at a future land use, which probably, when you move and you don't, you're not on a planning commission or county commission or anything, or a planning department, you're not going to really know that. But there's a lot of low density area before you even move there. And now we believe it needs to be 10 acre lots. You moved around low density. A lot of times, that's usually what happens is if you're moving around low density or you're moving around commercial, that's probably what's going to continue happening in that area. So unfortunately, again, if you don't know that that, what that map means or what your area is, you start not liking what's going on around you, even though you started at 10 acres. And I am taking your stuff into concern, Ms. Ms. Kathy. But again, a lot of that is was developed way before then. And that doesn't mean we should continue to do that. But it also, you moved around an area that eventually is going to, I believe, end up low density.
Just to be clear, I mean, I, you know, personally, I'm not opposed to smaller lots in terms of impact on me. Because, you know, it's, you know, there's, I mean, it's not like that, I don't, that doesn't bother me. It's just the fact that, and I think Karen and Tim are probably of the same mind, is that, so that's not the point, that we don't want neighbors. The the point is, is that, is that area really, can it really support this level of development from now, you know, into the future? I mean, can it really support that? And and our, my position is that it really can't. But it's not that I worry, I don't mind neighbors, you know, five acre parts, 10, 12 more neighbors, that's not a problem. So it's not that, that's the issue.
Okay, I had two questions. One was was the water, and it sounds like we've discussed that at length here. So during the subdivision and the plating process, will there be a requirement to provide documentation that adequate water will be supplied? Am I assuming with this lot sizes that he's going to want to drill wells on every lot?
Yes, that was what he had indicated. I know our subdivision regulations do not require a water system until you get to that 15 lots, 25 people. So he's under that, he's at that 12 lot. So individual wells on each lot and septics.
Okay, my second item was an item E underneath the analysis on page eight and nine. It says dirt work has commenced without an approved stormwater permit. Did they get a grading permit?
Not yet. They did start some work on that road out there.
Are they beyond where they should be, where they should be told to stop?
They're close.
Until they get permits?
They're close.
Can I interrupt, Brittany?
Sure.
Cody did talk to Buzz on Friday, and he did send him away with a stormwater permit and and stuff. And so Buzz is going to come back in and apply.
So the paperwork is in process?
Yes.
Hold on, we didn't hear Jerry.
I apologize. Buzz stopped by the office on Friday, and Cody did talk to Buzz about getting a stormwater construction permit per se for some of the dirt work that's been started. And he's going to be applying and submitting that paperwork.
I just want to make sure that he's in compliance. Those were the two items I had. Charlie, did you have something else?
I just had two quick questions for you, Brittany. And it's water permits or stormwater construction permits. Are you doing anything about metering drainage?
So as part of the stormwater in our section 507, there are some requirements for it depending upon the amount of impervious area that is gained during that process.
So if there's a previous drainage issue on the property, then it's addressed at a greater severity?
So basically, when you do the development, you can increase drainage off of the property. So the existing conditions, so whatever is draining off now, that whatever that amount is, has to be the same post-development.
So their engineers would have to do some metering to avoid increasing?
Correct. They would have to take into account any impervious area, which includes houses, driveways, roads, any of those types of things, and they would take that into consideration. And then they have to do the calculations for pre and post-development, and then they have to detain whatever the difference is.
And then my second question would be, I I just wanted to see whether you were doing anything on metering that that would answer more to Catherine's and and comments there. The next one, how far out on the zoning request to go to this ranchette? In other words, we've we've got a noteworthy concern right now of 10 acres versus five. And how far out are they going to get notified? This could be a bigger issue up there in other.
The 500 feet, it's the normal 500 feet. And then if they're agriculture, they go out to two miles.
Yeah. And there isn't many, according to your listing, that are agriculture, is it?
No, most of that, that green that's up there now is actually forest service.
No, I guess there is three directions, north, south, and west have agriculture according to surrounding zoning.
Right, but most of the green that's up there right now, that's a future land use. That's all forest service. Because the actual agricultural zoning is a light green. That's actually what we consider park, like a forest, and that's forest service.
All I was meaning was this, remember when I said that word contentious? This could end up a good try on the five acres in heading into the contentious area. Thank you.
Are there further questions on this item?
Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Jim.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yes, I'm sorry, I am late in joining you, but, you know, one of those mysteries of the digital age, I guess. So anyway, I I just have a question regarding what kind of fire protection is provided and from where for this general area?
It's Hill City Volunteer Fire Department.
The Hill City Volunteer Fire Department. Okay. I'm always struck by how we continue to allow these developments, and justifiably so in most cases. But in view of the current news from other parts of the country regarding subdivisions that place themselves in largely forested environments, I am struck by every time you put a house in, you increase the potential because of human interaction with the natural environment for some kind of fire, forest, fire event and vice versa. So anyway, I I think that's one thing that concerns me about these kinds of developments is the more, the more development there is in this kind of an area, the greater the potential for some, some kind of catastrophic fire, which, you know, may begin in the forest. And then suddenly, we're talking about not just trees burning, but large expensive homes with with very real people in it. And so anyway, I I I'm a little trepidatious about any kind of expansion where there isn't something other than some kind of better fire protection. I mean, volunteer fire departments are great, but they're slow in responding. And of course, I imagine the forest service has some kind of presence in terms of fire response too. But anyway, I just want to noted that I I have a concern about that.
Thank you. Deb?
I agree with Rich on the grading. And then I also know that Cody will grade and then ask forgiveness. So I think you guys should probably go out there and look what he's doing or what he does is. And as much as I like Cody, he's a nice guy, but he doesn't always follow what he has on paper either. So by chance, maybe Brittany should go out there or somebody should go out there and look and make sure he's doing what he's supposed to before he even does all this permitting.
I have some profile holes to go look at today, so I will go by there. And then to address Jim's concern, I know that under the Harney Mountain, when they did the plating for that subdivision, there was a requirement that those homes be built with sprinkler systems, I believe. And they did have to submit a fire mitigation plan as part of their final plat process. So, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's Cody?
Cody Shad.
Further questions?
Well, just to just quickly, you know, regarding fire, wildland fire from the state, state wildland, wildland fire, is there, you know, there, that's the presence that would be there if there was truly a big so-called wildfire that, you know, encompassed these houses. So, I mean, the the volunteer fire department is there too if it were like a house fire or something smaller scale. And it certainly assists. We've had one since I've lived there, which was a big sweeping fire, and it's, they're real scary, let me tell you. And but that, then the then the state wildland fire, which I'm sure then there's some federal too that get involved. But we're out, we're out in forests.
Further questions on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Staff is recommending approval of the layout plan LPL 20 dash 24 with 15 conditions, noting that there are no folks here from the public to make final comment on this item. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I still have one more question, actually, now that I'm thinking about it. Only because, Brittany, you said that the current future use is zoned ranchette. What was it before everything changed?
I don't know if we still have that on our, I don't think we have it in our system anymore.
What was your question?
What was it? What was the previous comp plan's future use designation prior to the updated?
I don't know. Without going back to, I think we have that in our archives. We don't have access to it on Rapid Map anymore. So, and I'm guessing, just from looking at how these are coded with the ranchette, it was most likely limited agriculture with 10 acre minimums.
Most likely limited ag.
Likely, just because the way that how those are all coded right now with that tin load court is actually limited agriculture. And now they have the future land use as ranchette.
They also have low density along that road all the way around, so they might go low density, limited ag, and then ag too, so.
Right.
Right, that future land use is actually rural residential. So that rural residential is the same as our old low density residential. So it's those, they're synonymous with each other, they just have a different name, essentially.
Further questions? Okay. Again, recommendation was for approval of layout plan LPL 20 dash 24 with 15 conditions. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, that's right. Thank you, Jim is on the line now.
Sorry about that.
I'll start with you, Jim.
We enjoy you being here.
Well, it complicates things a little bit, I know.
Rich.
Hi.
Charlie.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Sandy.
No.
Travis.
Hi.
Kathy.
No.
Deb.
Hi.
Motion carries. Brings us to item eight, county board report.
The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the August 24, 2020 Planning Commission meeting.
No comments on that. Item number nine is items from the public. Again, there are no one, there is no one in the audience here from the public.
You're not public, John.
Item 10, items from staff.
So you have the building permit report in front of you. We did convert to a new system. The city did convert our track it system. They did an upgrade on it, so we are using that new system now. So the the report might look a little different, the way that it's set up. But we are staying on pace with what we were in 2019. We're actually a little ahead of what we were in August of 2019. We're staying fairly busy, and it doesn't look like development is slowing down at all, all things considered, so.
Any questions on the building permit report? Go ahead, Kathy.
One good question. So I'm assuming that on this front page, the first few columns, they say June, that really is August. Because this is the August report.
Yes. Oh, the one up top, yes, it should say August.
Small matter, but so it's interesting because the, as I read it, anyway, if you look at year to date, the number of the total dollar value of permits is slightly down. But the value per permit is up significantly. The fact that there's, you know, and then the number of permits is down by 33%. Do you think that has something to do with the, you know, the COVID, the times we're living in? Or, I mean, last year at this time, you were, you dealt with 336 number of permits, and now you're down to 224. Is that, even though the value is, you know, very close, but do you think that does have any reflection on the COVID situation?
No, I don't, what ones did you hand out? Because mine says three, 325 and 336. I have different numbers.
Oh.
From the one that was on the.
Yeah.
It is June's numbers.
Yeah, that's not the right one.
It looks to me, Kathy, that the public works slash utilities column has added $1.8 million to the to the list there. If that wasn't there, then things would even be further apart.
So Brittany, can you read us the?
Yeah, because actually, in the 2019, there was 336 permits, and the taxable value was 15.6 million, with the average permit about 46,000.
And that's what I have.
In 2020, the average was 325 number of permits. The taxable value was 19.5 million, and the average cost per permit was 60,000.
Oh, okay, so somehow or another, these are, okay, so you're really, really on track.
Yeah, no, we're actually ahead, probably more. We're seeing probably larger homes being built in the hills.
Okay.
I was going to say, I thought I've seen way more construction, so.
Yes, there's two developments that are, have significant amount of development is Murphy Ranch Estates and then the Prairie Fire for single family. And then any open lots that are in the hills seems like we're doing profile holes, percolation, and we're getting building permits on them.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for clarifying that.
Yes.
Any other items from staff? Items from the membership?
Just one, I'm always bringing up these things to make more work for Brittany, but this is a a good example of somebody writing in a concern in regards to an item that we have. Do we have a system to actually answer these, especially when we're, they're dealing with not 10 acre lots or dealing with ranchettes? So this person would know that, so they follow it a little better? Do we have any sort of system like that? That would be nice, so our citizens would know that we were looking out for them and giving them a little heads up. Just a thought.
Change the the requirement for areas with limited ag and ag a little bit different, meaning instead of 500 feet, which doesn't cover anything in in the county. It's more like a city setback area. So maybe if you want to look into something like that, where if they're in the surrounding area a certain amount, it might have to be the two mile area or something like that for everything that's.
I'm just thinking that when these things come up, like regularly, we hear people, I sent in my concern. I never heard a damn thing, but.
Right.
And I think we could develop, and I don't mean to say cookie cutter, but we could develop good explanatory answers for these folks that would cue them to watch it further.
Or they could watch it on YouTube or send them a thing on YouTube that the planning commission discussion will be on this date. If you'd like to be there, if not, you can get on YouTube and see it on whatever, September 21st or whatever, and see why we did what we did. I mean, we shouldn't have to write back, but in one sense, but the other, give them a heads up of how the process works.
The only reason I thought we should write back on this one is because of the fact that we are looking at a different zoning category. That, and that's. that we are looking at a different zoning category uh that, and that's what I voted on. In other words, it's, it's covered. It's either going to stay ten acres or they're going to apply to get it five. And this person would want to know it's five.
But Charlie, someone knew that this was happening today.
Yeah.
So they also can call the staff.
True.
You know what I mean? If you wrote a letter, then you know something's happening. And number two, then you also know that you can follow through with what happened today or, or call in. So there is a process.
It'll be a little comical. I, in this case, I might call and say, hey, watch out for the five acres. And I told you so. Just remember me.
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any further items from membership? Seeing none. Uh item twelve, adjournment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second.
Second, third.
Did you catch all those, Jerry? There were several. Um.
I gotta do a roll call, roll call.
We do have a roll call vote to adjourn.
Rich.
Hi.
Charlie.
Hi.
Jim.
He mouthed it.
Oh, did he?
Jim, take up.
You're muted.
I'm muted. Hi, yes.
Sandy.
Hi.
Travis.
Hi.
Kathy.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Very good. Thank you.